I want to order the regularly scheduled El Segundo City Council meeting, Tuesday, December 17th, 6:00 PM. We have the invocation that will be led by Father Alexi Smith, who I see in the back of the St. Andrew Russian Greek Catholic Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Pimentel. All please rise.
I somehow didn't get the memo about the Hawaiian attire, so I apologize. Let us pray. Almighty and eternal God, as the moonlight fills the sky this evening, as our Jewish brothers and sisters anticipate their coming Festival of Lights, the Festival of Hanukkah, and as Christians anticipate our coming Feast of Lights, Christmas, and as others celebrate the winter solstice and Kwanzaa, fill both the members of our city council and those members of the public who provide them with input with your radiant light. Father, your primary utterance of creation according to the Book of Genesis was "Let there be light." The Festival of Hanukkah is expressed by the ceremonial lighting of candles, which daily increase in number to symbolize how light exceeds darkness. And in the Gospel, according to John, we read that "The light came into the world and the darkness did not cover it up." Send forth your sustaining light to shine on the members of our city council, that they may not falter in the just exercise of their responsibilities and in their commitment to both the residents and commercial sectors of our city, that laboring together, we can wed both our residents and those engaged in commercial endeavors into one unified, light-filled people who share the blessings of living and working in our city. Send them and all of us your compassionate light, that we may never forget those residents of our city who are less fortunate than are we. May we all be light bearers this season. Fill our hearts with your love. May our love for you be reflected in our love for and service to both our city and its people. Amen.
Please follow me. I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for what stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Alexi, and thank you, Councilmember Pimentel. We've got quite a few special presentations and proclamations. The first one will be read by Mayor Protem Purstuck.
Okay, proclamation by the city of El Segundo, California. Whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner was conceived by the El Segundo resident, Bill Kaufman, in 1983. Bill solicited the help of local businesses, residents, and organizations to fund, cook, and serve a traditional Christmas dinner that brought people together to share the holiday spirit. And whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner has become a hometown tradition that has served the community for over 30 years. The last 31 Christmas dinners have been served at the Jocelyn Center. And whereas the annual Christmas dinner will be provided this season, per sponsored by the El Segundo Kiwanis Club, along with donations from the Doubletree Hotel, Natural Simplicity, and Ralphs, as well as the time and effort of many individuals, individual volunteers, along with the support of the Recorations and Parks Department Outreach Office. And whereas the El Segundo Community Christmas Dinner will be held at 12:00 PM on December 25th at the Recorations and Parks Department Jocelyn Center for the benefit of all those in the community who wish to participate in fellowship and share in some Christmas cheer. Now therefore, on this 17th day of December 2019, the mayor and members of the city council of the city of El Segundo, California, hereby commend and thank all sponsors, supporters, and volunteers for their unselfish community service in keeping this hometown holiday tradition alive in El Segundo. And Meredith Pettit will accept this proclamation.
Good evening and Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays. Thank you for the proclamation. Just real brief, we just want to let everybody know that if you do want to come out on Christmas Day to the Jocelyn Center, to the Community Christmas Dinner, we highly recommend RSVPing to the Jocelyn Center this week, if possible, just to make sure that we have enough food for everybody, but nobody will be turned away. Thank you.
Great program. Thank you, Meredith. Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, next up, we have a commendation that will be read by Councilman Nichol.
Thank you. This commendation, city of El Segundo, California. Whereas the goal of the El Segundo Police Department's volunteer program, otherwise known as ESVP, is to assist the police department in their efforts to better serve the citizens of the city of El Segundo. And whereas ESVP members are the eyes and ears of the police department, and as representatives of the city and the police department, must maintain an image at all times that parallels the professionalism of the El Segundo Police Department. And whereas Dick Wykoff has been an El Segundo Police Department ESVP since May 17, 2000, providing routine patrol but contributing additional hours, working many community-related events, including the El Segundo Police Officers Association Car Show. And whereas Dick Wykoff always comes to work with a smile and eagerness to help with any requests, and makes invaluable contributions to the ESVP program and to our community with enthusiasm and support. And whereas Dick Wykoff has been selected by the city of El Segundo as the recipient of the El Segundo Police Department's ESVP of the Year Award, in recognition of his 210 and a half-plus hours he has volunteered to the El Segundo Police Department's volunteer program. Now therefore, the mayor and members of city council of the city of El Segundo, California, on this 17th day of December 2019, hereby commend Dick Wykoff for his invaluable contributions to the El Segundo Police Department Volunteer Program, and invite all citizens in recognizing, Richard, as his mother calls him, as the El Segundo Police Department's 2019 ESVP of the Year. Congratulations, Richard. Seeing the chief walk up, I'm assuming the chief has a few words, and we'd love to hear from you.
Well, thank you, and that was a great read that you had there, and I think it really summarizes this great man standing next to me. And you heard me say it at the lunch, but I think it bears repeating for our entire community, especially at this time of year. We give of our finances, we give canned goods and so forth, but there's one thing that people give that is a limited commodity and that you can never get back. You can't re-earn it, and that's your time. We all have a limited amount of time on this earth, and that would, makes me especially proud to work with people like Dick and others in the audience, is the fact that they're willing to give of that commodity for their community to make this place better. And I can tell you, as the chief here, the work that they do daily does make this a better, safer place, whether it's manning checkpoints for a parade, whether it's doing vacation checks when somebody's going out of town. They take that workload and they take that lift that otherwise would have to go to somebody else, and they say, hey, we got this. And they go out and do it without being asked because they enjoy, and they enjoy the service. So from the bottom of my heart, Dick, thank you so much. Thank you to all the volunteers that make this a great place to be, live, work, and play. And with that, I will turn the microphone over to you.
This way. I'm deeply honored by this. Kind of brings back a... Oh, okay. I thought I was talking loud enough. Brings back a little bit of my history. I did 25 years in the Naval Reserve, and I can remember putting on the Navy uniform, and I would stand a little taller and walk a little prouder. And I retired after 25 years, like I mentioned, as a Chief Petty Officer. And then, let me see, probably 10 years later, I joined the volunteers here at El Segundo and the Police Department, and I get the same feeling when I put on a uniform, I stand taller and walk prouder. And I work with the most talented people that I know in law enforcement. I'm looking back here, there's lieutenants and captains and, of course, the chief here that I know, and truly enjoy their company and all their expertise. And with that, I thank you dearly, and thanks, chief, again, for the honor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Dick, wait a second. We're gonna get a photo.
we're gonna honor one of our colleagues. And Chief Wayland inspired me here. I was thinking about the 210.5 hours, I think, that Mr. Wykoff served. Some quick math, 7.75 years on council, roughly, give or take 20 hours a week, about 8,060 hours contributed to the city. So Dr. Brand, thank you for everything that you've done to make El Segundo stronger. It's been a pleasure working with you. And we've got a plaque for you, and I want to present that to Dr. Brand. I know Scott Mittnick would like to say some words. We've also got Scott Houston, the Chair of the Water, West Basin Water District here. We have Jennifer Lamarcay from Supervisor Han's office, and Assembly Burke, I don't know, is there a representative from Assembly Burke here? No? Okay, we've got a certificate from her. But here we have Dr. Brand presented to Dr. Don Brand in recognition of your dedicated service to the people of El Segundo, Councilmember, April 2016 through December 2019, and of course, prior to that as well. So thank you, Dr. Brand. Yeah. would like to present. Marsha, you want to come up, and then we'll go through the others? Thank you.
Don, Dr. Brand, on behalf of the Chamber, we want to thank you for your long partnership with the Chamber. You have been a supporter, you've been a partner, you've been there for us, sending members and getting involved and coming to ribbon cuttings and eating a lot of chicken. We are very, very grateful, and we hope we continue to work with you for a long time as you continue. I know you're not done, you have a lot of work to do. But when you and Sari have a couple of minutes, moments of free time, we have for you a beautiful basket filled with some desserts and coffee from some of our finest restaurants and places in El Segundo, so we want you to go enjoy yourselves on the Chamber, and we want to thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
Scott Mittnick, City Manager. Yes. Scott Houston, Chair of the West Basin Municipal Water District and El Segundo Resident. Welcome.
All right, well, Dr. Brand, well, first of all, greetings, mayor and members of city council. It's always my honor to be here in your chamber and speak, and I am the President of the West Basin Water Board of Directors, and I just wanted to come down and congratulate, if you will, Dr. Brand, his retirement from the council a second time, a second time around. And I do want to first say, to be honest with you, it's a little bit bittersweet coming earlier than I expected, because of course I expected it to come in the new year. And as we know, unfortunately, you know, this law that was signed into, well, this new bill that was signed the law by our governor forced Dr. Brand to make a choice before the end of the year on his service, his public service. So it is unfortunate, and as you all know, we have our agreements and our disagreements sometimes with Sacramento, and that's why our local control is very important. But that being said, you know, I wanted to come down personally and on behalf of our board, congratulate Dr. Brand on his service to our community, being such a great civic leader and a person who has given his whole life to public service, as a superintendent, as a school teacher, you know, just such a career of putting others before himself. And we want to wish him well on his retirement. And also, I did want to say, and he already knows this, it's like, look, you know, there's not too many elected officials that get a second time around, just like Governor Jerry Brown and others who got a chance to come back and maybe try it again, so congratulations on that, Dr. Brand. But also the fact that, you know, he does have, he leaves very big shoes to fill on our council. And he's very well respected, not only here in our city, but to our neighbors in Del Air and Wiseburn. I actually see some of them are here tonight, maybe for another reason, but they are here tonight. But so many of those residents know him well and support him and are part of our shared community, as well as the education community. You know, I do run into a lot of folks around the state who, of course, are in education, and a lot of them know Dr. Brand. As a matter of fact, even one of our own board members, Director Dear, when he was signing this proclamation, he even said, oh, my gosh, you know, the infamous Don Brand. That's right. And leaders around the state, you know, so his service at Inglewood and in other locations is truly appreciated. And one of the last things I just want to say, and I've known Don for a long time, and he has been my dear friend and my mentor from the time I started embarking on public service in this community and beyond. And I've always found him to be a person who says what he means and does what he says. And I have learned a lot from him, and I know that he's a person I could always count on to call, to ask for questions and support, even as I've been on our water board and I've had different issues, and I could call him and talk to him about things that were new in my realm, and yet somebody I could count on for support and good counsel. So I appreciate that immensely. And so with that, I did want to come down personally and present him a proclamation from our Board of Directors, all five of the board members, myself included, of course. We all know you and we appreciate you and your service. We're gonna miss you as a member of this council. We're gonna miss you at ICA, which is where a lot of times we'd run into you as well. And with that, I just again say congratulations on yet another retirement in your career. And I know that you're not gonna go far, you're gonna keep doing good work at Da Vinci and still in our community. And with that, thank you, Don, for all your service, and happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas to everybody. So, Dr. Brand. We have this. Oh, yeah. We have this. Here we go, guys. A couple of photos here. Get the mayor out. Can you just tilt it a little down? Yeah, yeah, yeah. There we go. All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, next up, we have Jennifer Lamarcay, who is the South Bay Deputy for Supervisor Janice Han.
Thank you, Mayor Boils, and good evening, honorable city council members. I'm honored to be here representing Supervisor Janice Han, who asked me to come tonight to extend her sincere congratulations on your amazing service, both in your first term and your current term. You have really just done so many positive things for the city. Your list of accomplishments is miles long, so we can't get into all that, but we know that you'll continue to do great work. You don't have to be up there on the dais to make a positive impact in El Segundo, which we know you'll continue to do. And I know the supervisor has really enjoyed working with you over the years in her different capacities, and we look forward to continuing the friendship. And beyond everything you've done for the city, I just want to say, you know, you're just such a kind person, and it's why your constituents love you and your colleagues love you. And so I know they'll miss you, will miss you as well, but we know we'll see you around the community, and we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. So if you'll indulge me, the county usually has the nicest commendations, but Director Houston is, you know, showing us up with that one. But it's presented to the Honorable Dr. Don Brand, and it acknowledges his council service from 2008 to 2012, and then again from 2016 to 2019, and it's in recognition of dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all the residents of Los Angeles County, and it's signed by Supervisor Janice Han. Congratulations.
Perfect. Thank you, guys. That's great. I like yours better because it has glass on it. Thank you so much.
All right, next up, we have a certificate that has been provided by Assemblywoman Burke that Mr. Mittnick will present.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Honorable Dr. Brand, I'm representing, well, I'm gonna...
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Honorable Dr. Brand, I'm representing, well, I'm going to... It is. It may be its last wear, too. So I'm going to present on behalf of the Assembly Member, but also on behalf of the City Employees and the Executive Team. So there's a really nice, cool memento here from the Assembly Member. It reads as it reads. I would like to say a few words on behalf of the employees. So one of the nicest parts about being City Managers, you get to represent the employees of an organization for moments like these. And, Dr. Brand, one of the recurring themes I've heard from the employees and from the Department Heads when we talk about issues and concerns and so on, is, and when they talk about Council Members, they've always had positive things to say about Dr. Brand and being there for the employees. So you've earned their trust and confidence. In fact, in thinking about today, three words came to mind with respect to Dr. Brand, and that would be leadership, loyalty, and legacy. And you've earned that. And on behalf of the Executive Team, we're going to miss you. And we, earlier today, Dr. Brand asked if he can come and say a few words to the Executive Team, and you were first on the agenda, and you were there for about 25 minutes, maybe 30 minutes. And it was a very genuine discussion, and we really appreciated your observations and words of wisdom. And he did talk about the changes, positive changes in the community. And I'd like to just remind Dr. Brand that going forward, the leadership of this Council and the employees, we're going to continue to build on the layers that have been laid over the past century, and you played a key role in that and wearing many different hats. So the issues that you talked about, we're going to keep working on them, and the future for El Segundo is indeed brighter, and you played a key role in that. So on behalf of the Executive Team, the 300-plus members of this city family, we want to thank you. And I have a little memento here from the Executive Team that I'd like to pass on to you. Look at these twins over here. I love it. Here we go, a couple more shots. Lovely, thank you.
We're not quite done. I want to give, I just realized, my eyes aren't so good, that we have a couple Mayors in the audience. I see Suzanne back there, Mayor Fuentes, and Mayor Carl Jacobson, you're always in the same spot, so I know where you're going to be. But I'd give you the opportunity, if you'd like to approach and say a few words, please.
Thank you, Mayor Boils, Council. I'm here tonight to, where'd Don go? Oh, he's out wandering in the audience. Yes. So one of the greatest privileges of my eight years of elected service was to work with Don for four years. Somebody said he was kind. He is one of the kindest men I know. And he has the heart of a servant. We all have so much to learn from him. And I just want to give a couple examples. The first is, when he was elected the second time, the first thing he got on, and you know this, Mayor, is the unfunded pension liability. He immediately reached out to all the unions in the room. He wanted to sit down at the table, and he said, "I know there's a solution to this, and it's being one-on-one." And you did it, Don. That's just one example. And another example that I think is really important that most people might not know is, we have a world-class pool in this city because of this man. He is with the Da Vinci Schools, but he's been with the Wiseburn Schools as Superintendent for 30 years? 15 years, sorry, okay. But the Wiseburn School District wanted to build their high school in El Segundo, and Don came to me, and he wasn't elected at the time, he was between his terms. He wanted to meet me for coffee, and he said, "Look, Wiseburn's going to put a high school in El Segundo. Let's do what's really best for this community. Instead of both entities spending a lot of money on lawyers, let's get a pool in town," he said. "The school district is willing to commit the acreage and the money." And, I mean, it's your pool, Don. It should be the Don Brand Pool, really. You were just really the whole incentive and inspiration for that, and you reached out to other community members and said, "Let's do this," and it was a long road, and there was drama, but you have many legacies in this town, but I think one of the greatest really is that pool. And you're just all about being a bridge in the community and reaching out to people. And how many on this Council, when you said you were going to run, how many did Don call to reach out to, just to get to know you, to talk to you, to see? That's how he is. And how many times you reached out to me, even when you weren't on the Council? You are just such a bridge builder. So you are a powerful inspiration, your dear friend. I love you, Don, and I wish you all the best, and thank you from the City of El Segundo and from me. Pleasure.
Thank you, former Mayor Suzanne Fuentes. Next up, we have former Mayor Carl Jacobson.
Don, it's been a pleasure serving with you two and a half times. You've always been a good servant for the people. Sometimes we disagreed, but a lot of the times we agreed. And good luck in serving with the trustees of the Da Vinci School, and continue your...
You're more popular over there.
You're not displeased here. Anyway, great, great seeing you again, and good luck.
That's right. That's right. You will. Your wife can put it in there. She'll sneak it right in. Great, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor Carl Jacobson. All right, does anyone else like to, I know the Council would like to say a few words, but Mr. Swanson, you look like you're, no? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. Anyone want to say a few words?
So, Don, thank you for being a great partner, and you have really brought a lot to this, to the Council, and we can't thank you enough for all the years of dedication, the years of service you've given us. You've just been, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I see great things in the future, and I know I'll see you walking around, it's supposed to be down Oak Street. So keep up the walk, and I know you'll be, keep moving and shaking as far as, and doing great things with Da Vinci and the community. Thank you.
Councilman Nicola Pimentel.
Dr. Brand, I think it shines through that you are an educator by training and by trade. You cannot, on the dais and in our deliberations, put a quantity on wisdom. And I think that your willingness to share your knowledge of how the public sector works and interacts with cities, particularly as we go through exactly the sorts of labor issues that Mayor Fuentes brought up, we would be adrift without. And I think we owe you a great debt as we have approached those and come to this sort of era of productive labor piece and structural equity. I really appreciate it, and I think it will definitely be missed.
Dr. Brand's sitting next to you for 18, 19 months, maybe. It's been enjoyable. Thank you for sharing your water with me. You were on the Council when I was originally appointed to the Planning Commission, and I was told many, many years ago to write handwritten notes of thank you. And I did, and I only got one response, and it was from you. And you invited me to lunch, and I clearly had aspirations for this chair then, and I remember asking you just a piece of advice, and you said, "You know, Scott, if I could do it again, I would do it with more friends so that I could get more done." And I remember thinking to myself, like, gosh, heed that advice, Scott. Try not to run on a Council where you may not have like minds with you. But I've enjoyed agreeing with you on a few things. I've enjoyed respectfully disagreeing with you on others. I know that you mean well in everything that you do, and I hope that the Board, your Board seat at Da Vinci doesn't take too much time away from you and your wife. I hope that you enjoy your time that you have, and just keep doing what you're doing.
All right, if anyone else would like to say a few words, please feel free to do so. Ron will. And then Scott, would you like to do a photo with all of us at the dais? Okay. Yeah, maybe we'll let Mr. Swanson speak first.
We didn't tell Mr. Swanson it was Hawaiian Shirt Day.
You don't have to tell Ron that.
This is just Tuesday.
It's a Oha Shirt Day? Wow. Shock. Let's just say, Dr. Brand, Don, my neighbor, always interesting conversations with you. I shared something with Sari. I go, I just asked her a minute ago, I go, "Okay, what are you going to do with them every first and third Tuesdays?" Because I'm not home those days. You can't send them over to me. So, but no, you know, you've been an asset to this community. And like I said, very spirited conversations over the years. But we, not only, you know, you're here, you're my neighbor. I mean, he had to go in my house one night when I was in Hawaii, and the alarm was going off, and he actually found the key for PD and let him in. So he's kind of full service, goes around. But you're going to have a lot of fun doing what you're doing, because I know education is the heartbeat that you run by. And this sometimes gets irritating here, but just a little. But you'll have a lot of fun doing what you're doing. I wish you well in your new endeavors. Thanks.
I think Mr. Mitnick would suggest we get a photo of all of us up here in the dais. I don't know if you can do that from back there. Robert, thank you. Thank you, Robert. All right, thank you very much, Dr. Brand. Do you want to say a few words?
I want to say a few remarks in my own defense. First of all, thank you, everyone, for the tributes this evening. It's a very, very special evening. This is the second time I stepped down from the dais here. I did it in March or April of 2012, and now again tonight, earlier than I expected to during this term of service. But a good lesson for you, Drew and Carol, you get more gifts when you step down twice. You're only going to get gifts after, say, year eight, okay? Now, I got the key. The other key I got is not hooked up to a plaque like this, but I still haven't found the lock it works in. At least this one is hooked up to this plaque, so I won't lose it. And someday I'll find that lock. Thanks for all of that. I was going to do a shout-out for Carl and Suzanne, because you win the award, Suzanne, for coming the furthest, and appreciated both of your remarks, and having the opportunity to serve with you both here for years. Carl is just so special. He served the city here for a total of 24 years as a Council Member, separated those terms by eight years. I only had four years off for good behavior. And still goes to more meetings than I do. And I'm on the Council, right, for a little bit longer. So just amazing, one-of-a-kind service in our century as a city, really caring and making, building El Segundo, really, to what it became. And Suzanne was Mayor here for four straight years, which was unusual. And that night that the second term started, the second two-year term, it was with only my vote and her own. And City Attorney over here, it was Carl Berger, said, "Okay, nobody could get three votes, so there's no change. She's still Mayor." That was a surprising night, you know, how that worked out. We didn't see that coming. But such a pleasure for me, lucky for me, to get to serve with both of you. I think tonight represents the end of an era, because for a long, long time, for decades here, someone has been on the Council that represents the people who built this town back in the 40s and 50s and 60s. And Carl was that person for so, so long, and Suzanne, and I've been since, in the 2000s here. And we're not going to have that, and I hope we don't forget that those folks are out there, that still care and enjoy this town and want to be heard, even though they don't participate in social media like I don't. But they are really important people that we all serve. I think the best years for the city are ahead of us. I think we're just going to get better. The Council here, everybody cares and tries their best and puts in those thousands of hours the Mayor talked about. I never did that count. If I'd have done that, I might have left before. So I just think they're going to work together great as a team. And I'd like to welcome Lance Giroux to the Council. I don't know if you'll get this seat or not. I've had it for eight of the last 12 years. But you all didn't have to do a campaign, but you've all done campaigns, so you know how lucky you are to get out of another one, all the time and effort and money. And I think, Lance, that you'll enjoy your time up here and being part of the team here, and will help to take it to the next level. So congratulations to you. We have some accomplishments here, and I was writing them down today as to what's happened on my watch here. Not that I caused these things single-handedly, because you don't really do anything alone. You do it as part of a group or a team. And I think the number one thing that happened, and Mayor Fuentes mentioned it, was that pension study group. That has saved the city 11, $12 million already, and there's more to come there. We didn't kick the can down the road. We got the employees involved in understanding how the systems work and contributing to the systems, and it's really paying off for us, and we've got to stay with that. Another great thing that happened in my time here was Scott Mitnick came here, and we got an experienced City Manager to lead us here, who is, like me, kind of an unreformed workaholic, and really cares about the city here and his job and all the professional things around that. I think that that's going to really pay off here as we go forward in 2020, 2020, and beyond. Other good things that happened that we all did together was, we got negotiations settled with each of the six associations. It took a long time, but that has such an impact on morale and productivity, and it's really nice to not be in negotiations now for a change. That was good. Another good thing is, we finally filled all our police officer positions. We've been trying on that for the longest time. Our chief told us what he needed to get it done. We gave it to him, and he got it done. And that's what the people out here in the neighborhoods want, is they want to see the police in their neighborhoods. They want to stop the daytime burglaries and the car thefts. Those are our most common things. Those are our most common things. And, uh, the presence and the visibility is huge, along with the new tech tools that we have. So we got that done, I'm glad to get that done before I left, and I hope we can hold on to it. I was proud of the fact that we finally got through after working on it for like three and a half years. The percent for arts, that one came along slow, but we got there. And, um, I think, uh, that's gonna be a great thing for the city going forward. We renamed the pulpit a PCH, okay? The businesses like that association with the coast. I'm not sure, um, the GPS, when that's gonna catch up with that? Because my thing keeps saying Sipulvita. And Pacific Coast Highway is a lot easier to say. But we did do that, and that was nice. And then finally, the seventh one I wrote down is the voters here passed Measure C. Measure C is to capture some sales tax here from the city that might otherwise go to the county. And it could be worth $8, $10 million for the city when it kicks in. I'm pretty confident the way government likes to raise taxes, the day will come when that kicks in. And, uh, so it's nice to have that in our back pocket as we go forward. So those are some accomplishments. Now, the meetings here going forward, they might be a little more boring than they've been. Because I won't be here in this seat, right? And I don't, I don't care too much about being politically correct, I'm kind of blunt. I got less time ahead of me than I got behind me, so I just put it out there. And, uh, so the media and the people who like to monitor the meetings, maybe not as fun going forward. I don't think Lance will do that. Time will tell. And I want to finish with a couple pieces that I kind of started with here four years ago that I use a lot in my career. And they go like this. Excellence can be attained if we care more than others think is wise. We risk more than others think is safe. We dream more than others think is practical. And we expect more than others think is possible. That's how we get there. Finally, remember this as you go through life. How far you go in life depends on your being tender with the young, compassionate with the aged, sympathetic with the striving, and tolerant of the weak and the strong. Because someday in life, you will have been all of these. Thank you, El Segundo.
That concludes our regularly scheduled show, just kidding. No, all right. That was long, it was good, really good. Not yours, I mean, all of it. Lot of celebratory comments. Thank you, Dr. Brand. Okay, seems strange to go to roll call, but let's go to roll call.
Councilmember Nicol.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember Brand.
I need an answer to that.
Mayor Pro Tem Pursta.
Here.
Mayor Boils.
Here, thank you. Now is the time and place for public communications, five-minute limit per person. If you could please state your name, address if you'd like.
Ron Swanson, 629 California. I just, you know, reflecting what this past year was, and Don, you hit on it. The first big thing that I see is Scott, our new city manager. That was a huge, huge gain for this city. And then I go back and I look at, you know, on 9/11, when we bring the In-N-Out in, and we get to co-mingle with all the employees, and it's just a different smile, there's a high step to the employees. And then you walk around the community in the downtown area, people are taking a lot of pride, and they're taking ownership of what they're doing. And I just, maybe because the economy is doing so well, and people have more to spend, they're just, they're smiling, they're having a good time doing what they're doing. But I can see it in this town, and we have nowhere to go but that way. We're not gonna go that way ever again, we're not gonna go down, we're gonna go forward. And then with the add of Lance coming on to council, I mean, you see nothing but pluses coming. And if everybody continues to work together, we can't stop, we just can't stop ourselves. And from how the employees react to the, to the public and just the high steps that they have, it's fantastic. So on that note, I just want to wish everybody in El Segundo council Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, and aloha.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson.
Hi, I'm Jessica Doherty, and I am a resident of Del Air, mom of two boys. And, um, I'm here to talk about the greenway we are trying to put in along Aviation Boulevard. First, I want to say, if you're from, if you're with this effort, either from Del Air or Hollygum, will you guys stand up or raise your hand so I can show that it's not wonderful? Okay, great, thank you. So I want to, today we're asking for something very specific. There is active transportation grant funding, and LA, and that is available coming up in March. LA County Metro has an active transportation grant funding support program, where Metro will actually write these, you know, complex government grants for municipalities. That letter of intent is due this Friday, and this is for multi-millions of dollars. So to put this project in perspective, do you want to be Vanna White or Vanna Man? Here's Del Air. Yeah, but over in this way is where Aviation Boulevard is, it's right on the eastern border of El Segundo. It currently looks like, you want to hold up the poster there, or Hugh? First, we'll hold up this one here. That's what it currently looks like. It is where Walshay Construction is planning and staging the LAX Crenshaw Expansion Line. We've had very little construction mitigation on our side, we've just been living there with the dust and with the construction. But we know it'll eventually get better. Especially because we have this plan now to actually put a greenway, which is a green walking path, bike path, along the land. Hugh's wife actually is a landscape architect, and they did these renderings for free. It is 60 feet wide. You can actually do a bike path and a walking path there. This parcel of land is the only stretch that does not have a bike path along this area. It is also part of Metro's first last mile initiative, because it is right there next to the metro station. There's so many reasons why this project is needed and mandated, not to mention the fact that there have been at least two deaths along this route by bikers. It is where Da Vinci students and Wiseburn students walk to and from school, there's no bike path. There is a crosswalk, but there's no bike path. What we're asking right now is there, we've actually identified funding that is available for multi-millions of dollars. This strip of land currently is owned by LA County Metro. We have met with Metro, we have met with many other entities, including the city of El Segundo. This project can happen, Metro is interested in it, Metro owns the land, but BNSF Railroad owns the operating rights. With the expansion of the metro line, BNSF can't do anything with it but store railcars there. The city of El Segundo also probably doesn't want railcars just stored there, it's the entrance to this beautiful city. And so, again, what we're asking for is for Metro to, I mean, not Metro, for the city of El Segundo to literally apply for this active transportation grant funding support program. All you have to do is submit a letter of intent, it's a five-page application, due by this Friday, though. This funding only comes around every two years. I know it's the holidays, and we're tired, and I don't want to be here, I want to be decorating Christmas cookies for my kids at home. But this is a timely thing. We are willing to help write the application, so I'm gonna give you guys, um, the actual application, so you guys can see what it looks like. And I want you, you want to see this closer?
I was saying you could give that to the clerk right here, she'll distribute it to us.
Okay, great, perfect. So here's the actual grant program. This is a memo that explains what we've done to date, and some of us are gonna talk about the community engagement we've done. And this is a specific letter asking for specifics of what we're doing that has the 300 survey responses and letters of support from other people, et cetera. So I want to bring up to all my former neighbors to just explain, um, what community engagement we've done to date. Do you want to?
I grew up in El Segundo, my name is Richard Rasmussen, my mom still lives here, so I feel there's always been this really good relationship between Del Air and El Segundo. I'm a Del Air resident now, did I say that? There's a huge community backing in this. Jessica had a, or called a, community meeting along with John Koppelman, it's kind of our, we don't really have a mayor, but if we did, it'd be John. And, uh, yeah. Over 300 people showed up to this, there's hard, you know, there's not even, I don't know the exact number of, amount of people that are in Del Air, but the backing for this is, uh, you know, it's in demand. Uh, I have very young kids now that go to Da Vinci, uh, they're gonna eventually go to Da Vinci High. And, uh, it would just be amazing for them to walk along there instead of, you know, riding along there instead of riding along Aviation, or, she said, a couple people have been killed in the last bunch of years. That's pretty much all I have to say about it. I mean, the only thing I have to note is, I mean, this is the first thing that everybody sees, you know, and it kind of, that's what they see the first thing for El Segundo, so, uh, that's it. Can I turn the rest of my time over to Jessica, or no?
No, we'll just, we'll reset the clock, yeah, thank you.
Hello, my name is John Koppelman, I'm the president of the Del Air Neighborhood Association. And, uh, I helped found it about, uh, 18 years ago, and have been very active in it ever since. I grew up in, in El Segundo, uh, my parents bought their home in 1956. And my mother just passed away recently, and in her home. So, uh, my younger brother made sure that she could, uh, live the rest of her life in the home as she wanted to do. I'm very connected to this community, uh, I love this community. I, uh, we've been working for a number of years on this dream of getting this railroad strip away from, uh, Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, and, uh, and doing something valuable for our community and for your community. We've been working on it for a number of years. I, uh, your ex-mayor, uh, Suzie Fuentes, uh, who I grew up with, uh, actually was involved in it at the time. And, and as you know how things heat up and then drop off and heat up and drop off. We've finally gotten to a point where, uh, we have the support of, of everybody. Everyone is on board, it's kind of a no-brainer, to not, to not like this is to not like Santa Claus. We, we, uh, we're, essentially, uh, Jessica has put together, uh, put this thing together and is handing it to the city of El Segundo on a silver platter. They really have to do nothing. To, to not, to miss this deadline on the 20th would be, to steal victory from, or steal defeat from the jaws of victory. It really would. It's, it's just, it would be a real shame to take, to lose this opportunity for such a valuable piece of property. The grant is there, all, at this point, there's no commitment actually needed, it's just a letter of intent. Essentially, a placeholder for that grant, so that in the future, we can apply for that grant, the, the city of El Segundo. But at this point, to just let the, the, the deadline come and go is like watching millions of dollars fly right out the door. And, and a beautiful opportunity. Please don't let that happen. We've worked very, very hard as a community to make that hap, to make this happen. And, uh, and it's not just for us, this is for your community, it's for, uh, all the neighboring communities. Everyone can benefit from this in so many ways, I'd have to be up here for three hours to tell you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Koppelman.
And I'd like to congratulate Don Brand, uh, a very good friend, thank you.
I want to add to what Mr. Koppelman, what Johnny Koppelman said. Greg and I were very involved with that, and talking to the county as well, because John had a great idea, and this might be something for the Art Commission, is to do something with that bridge, if you recall, John. To, to laser or cut something out of it so that it's a welcome to El Segundo, and that bridge that wasn't used. So Greg and I talked to Metro a lot, but they were using that land for staging everything, for the construction they were doing. So it was a moot point, but this sounds like really a great thing to get on now. But we did work with them a lot, and we worked with Supervisor Ridley Thomas as well. So, you know, we pushed it as much as we could, but they weren't interested because of the construction for the metro line. But keep the bridge in mind also, because that was John's idea.
Thank you, Suzanne.
For the record, that was Suzanne.
Hi, uh, my name is Hugh O'Gorman, I'm a member of, uh, the Del Air community, and congratulations, it's, we came over for this tonight, but I've just got to say it's deeply moving, watching these, uh, this ceremony to celebrate your service. And I just want to say, as someone who lives in Del Air, I did not grow up out here, uh, and I grew up on the East Coast, but the community that I've kind of come to know in the past couple of years since we've moved there has been nothing short of extraordinary. And community is what it's about, and this project has literally brought our community together. And I just would ask, Jessica and the team has done so much work, and it's really brought us all together. And, you know, my daughter's got to cross that, you know, that street. And I see the kids, when I drive them to school in the morning, the Da Vinci kids walking down Aviation. If you can help, we would really appreciate it, because it's dangerous, and we have an opportunity to make something really beautiful for our children, because two years makes a difference in her life, so I hope we can get it in, uh, on time. So, thank you.
Yeah, you can, please.
It'll be super brief. It's serendipitous that, um, it's Don Brand's last night, I, um, wanted to just tell you, thank you for all your service, thank you for all you've done for us. Maybe this final, um, day of, um, your service could be helping us just get a commitment to apply for this. It's, you know, nothing crazy we're asking for, and we want to help, we've queued up so much of the work. But, um, we want to be really great neighbors, and Del Air is neighborhood, neighbors to El Segundo, and we really appreciate and love. El Segundo come here all the time, would love to see that border become this beautiful entryway that is, you know, a possibility for all the companies and businesses that come in. And as we said, these active transportation grant funds come around every two years. The letter of intent is due this Friday, which means the funding wouldn't even get to us, we wouldn't even be starting to do anything until next year this time. So I know you guys are really busy right now, but this is a long-range planning. Please submit that letter of intent. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty. Mr. Mitnick, are there any other public communications? Yeah, oh, sorry. Yeah, please, we'll address this in a minute, thanks. Mrs. Zarniki.
There's a couple of us still from El Segundo also that would like to speak. My name is Tracy Miller-Zarniki, I'm 22-year resident of El Segundo. Good evening to Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, and for the last time, Dr. Brand up there. I'm here to speak briefly on item D11 on tonight's agenda, I believe you'll hear from a few others if we have time. Since we, as a committee, were not able to meet to talk about this since the last time it was a topic on your agenda, so we wanted to just express our thoughts individually, if we could. I'm pleased to see the ordinance on there to shift our food service businesses into providing single-use plastics on a, upon request-only basis. But we must acknowledge, this is only a baby step in the right direction. I don't want to do this and then be like, okay, we're done with that. It is something we, we had hoped we might get more, uh, bang for the ordinance-writing buck, but we are grateful that we have this step coming, and it is on the right path. I hope that you, as you support this ordinance, you will also allow our committee to help educate, or, uh, you will allow our committee to help us educate our local community about the fact that going plastic-free is not as painful or expensive as people may think it is. The chemical and restaurant industries already acknowledge that moving towards the use of sustainable food service products is a necessary effort. And we want to help inspire community to make these moves before the state makes us do them anyway. My other specific comments to ordinance are, I'm not sure why we need a three-month window to get it going, because it's, unless that's an internal thing only. Pretty much, it's just a, hey, stop shoving utensils and plastic straws and bags, so, you know, I'm not sure what the three-month waiting period is, unless it is internal stuff we have to do. And also, on the, uh, extensions and exemptions section, there's, uh, a mention of undue hardship, a clause about that. I'm not sure how that really makes sense in this draft of an ordinance, since for business to not be freely giving away costly single-use straws and plastic utensils, it's actually a savings for them. So just want to mention, I'm not sure where that's in there. And one thing I'm gonna say to anybody listening, those who might be wondering how to move into a shift away from plastics, this is a very well-timed bit of advice I want to say, is that bamboo or metal straws make really great stocking stuffers. And reusable utensils, little pack of those, they work- utensils, little pack of those, they work great for Hanukkah gifts, reusable cups, all those things, really great for holiday shopping. So, if you must shop in the holiday season, uh, please think more sustainably in your efforts, and uh, maybe even think ahead to New Year's resolution about making a change as simple as moving away from single-use plastics. So, that's all for now. Uh, thank you for your time. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarniki.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members and city staff. My name is Sarah Brockhouse, and I'm a resident of El Segundo. I am currently serving on the Environmental Committee, but would like to offer a few comments tonight in my personal, personal capacity as a resident. My comments are my own, and I do not purport to speak on behalf of the committee members. The committee has been discussing potential plastic ban ordinances and business surveys in its last several meetings, but have not met since the last city council meeting, which led to the proposed on-request-only ordinance on the agenda for tonight. This is the item I would like to share my thoughts on this evening. Plastic pollutes at every step in its life cycle. It is made from fossil fuels, and its production requires heavy chemical input and emission of air pollutants. Over nine billion metric tons of plastics have been created since its widespread use began after World War Two. Since it doesn't degrade, but instead breaks down into smaller pieces, most of that plastic still exists in our planet today. Once discarded, it pervades our landfills, our soils, our waterways, and is even ingested by animals and humans, causing significant public health implications, the, the full extent of which are still not fully known. More than eight million tons of plastic end up in our oceans every year. As the text of the ordinance you are considering tonight states, "In a business-as-usual scenario, the ocean is expected to contain more plastic by weight than it does fish by 2050." The damage this material inflicts to our marine ecosystems and the cost of the environmental mitigation are also appropriately emphasized in the proposed ordinance. As a coastal community, El Segundo has a particular obligation related to single-use plastics and their disposal. Plastics discarded on our streets make their way into our storm drains and pass directly into the ocean. This should be unacceptable for a developed community. We can and should do our best to ensure that we are not contributing to this devastating environmental problem, but an on-request-only ordinance, ordinance related to single-use plastics is not our best. Neighboring coastal communities have implemented a single-use plastic and polystyrene bans. These ordinances address some of the concerns council expressed during the December third meeting. They provide clear definitions, applicability, and inclusions and exclusions of specific materials. They also allow for local businesses to apply for hardship exemptions in the event the business faces an undue burden due to conversion costs. El Segundo has a demonstrable environmental health and safety interest in protecting the public and the environment from the negative consequences of materials like single-use plastics and polystyrene. We have an interest in doing our part to divest from these materials that will cause future generations harm. These interests should be a paramount consideration to our city officials. I urge council to adopt the ordinance proposed tonight, but work with the Environmental Committee and city staff to move towards adopting an identical single-use plastic ban to those of Hermosa and Manhattan Beach. Thank you for your time and dedicated service to our city.
Thank you, Mrs. Brockhouse.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Boils and council members. Uh, my name is Cory Zupo. I'm a resident of El Segundo and a mother of two kids under two. I just want to first start off and say I really enjoyed this presentation. I love that idea. My two kids go to beach babies off of aviation, so I pass that area all the time, very familiar with it, and then that would be lovely. Uh, so back to this. I'm on the Environmental Committee, also, you know, resident. Um, just wanted to support, show my support for the plastic ordinance. Um, mainly, I, I'm kind of weaning this, I'm sorry. It's, I'm saying this from like a mom just recently coming back from maternity leave. So normally, you know, I'm busy working, being a mom, just busy. Well, on my maternity leave, I had three months off. I walked the city daily, every alley, every roadway, the beach, it's a mess. And it's getting better because of our new trash ordinance, and, you know, we have closed bins, but it's still a mess. And growing up in the inland empire, the inland cities, a lot of that trash is coming here from our stormways. So I know it's not us mainly that's causing it, it's the inland cities, but there's not going to be any change until we set the precedents. So as a beach community, we have like an ownership in this, and so just my ask is in the future that we do more, like this ordinance is great if it passes, but I would love just to see more done, because these inland communities aren't going to make any changes until we start taking leadership in it, and their trash is just going to keep on coming. Every time it rains, it's going to be at the beach. So that was just my observance of three months off, is just walking everywhere like, wow, this is just ridiculous. And so back in July and August, I was taking pictures, and I emailed the, um, LA County Beach and Waterway, I can't remember the acronym. It was emailed them, and there's like, oh, we're gonna work on it. A week later, come back, it's still a mess. So that's all just my ask as a mom, and just being more aware of my maternity leave, if we could just do more in the future. That's all. And I love this idea.
Thank you, Mrs. Zupo.
Hello, uh, good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Mario Inga. I'm a resident from, uh, El Segundo, and I'm here to, uh, say that I support the, uh, Del Air initiative. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Inga. I'm gonna get you those ratings for my soccer team. I apologize for being late, by the way.
You, you can wait him out. He's leaving for a year.
All right, any other public communications? See, none will close public communications. Um, before we move on, I just want to ask the city manager, Mr. Mitnick, as it relates to the Del Air, the aviation green belt, for lack of a better term, is, what's the risk of signing the letter requesting, or expressing letter of intent for the Metro grant?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's, it's a good question. Um, the bottom line is, the letter of intent can be submitted on Friday. Is it the ideal time to submit it from a grantsmanship perspective? It, it would probably be a stronger, um, application next time around. However, you can, it can certainly be submitted this Friday. Um, just because the, um, it can be done. The answer is yes, and it can get done. Um, it's not on the agenda for you to decide. However, if I'm not seeing any, um, uh, I gotta be careful here. Uh, we could submit the letter, and it can, we can put it in there, and I can bring it back at the next council meeting for sort of retroactive, um, support of it. Um, we didn't put it forward, and I've shared with the council, because you haven't given us direction to work on this or to do it. It's, you have a strategic plan, and we have a workload, and we have a budget, and a capital improvement program, and it was a very, um, involved process to put the capital improvement projects in there. This is not in there, and I'm not trying to be a wet blanket. I'm trying to be objective and to be as helpful as possible, and we've shared this. So, uh, the other question I asked of our public director is, if we do this, does it hurt our other, um, application that we have for, um, Safe Routes to School project? And, uh, we don't know if it does. We don't have any evidence to believe it would hurt it. Um, so there's a, there's a calculus here. Um, happy to move it forward, yeah, and, and work with these folks to get it in by, by Friday. It's not on-
Hold on, we haven't taken action, but, yeah.
I have to be able to be objective to you and, and live with the, um, the, the outcome here, 'cause I do not want to jeopardize any of the other projects, uh, that are, that are before, um, for, before the city. So, I'm in this limbo land that I don't have formal direction on it, so.
Is staff, the staff has decided. The board has no involvement, Metro staff, is that correct?
Well, the other piece is, when you apply for a capital project on a piece of property, you want the support of that property owner, and, and we don't have that. You know, we don't have anything saying, yeah, they're, they're gung-ho, they're, they're gonna do it. So, there's that risk that weakens the, the application. Uh, as, as your staff, I will tell you this, we would love to have this application more complete and ready to roll two years from now, but I, I still don't have your direction to work on this, but I would recommend approval to the council to pursue this at, at the appropriate time. So what the residents here are asking you to do is to speed this up with, uh, less than, um, ideal and complete, um, application. Um, there's some risk with that. Maybe not. You'd be rolling the dice. Uh, these folks have done their homework, I have, um, no doubt, um, to their, with respect to their tenacity, so I don't mind doing it. Just know there's an element of risk, and I'm not trying to sound bureaucratic, but, uh, we have a lot of capital projects that we're trying to bring to fruition. A facility, a comprehensive facilities, um, study was done. The council knows you have tens of millions of dollars worth of deficiencies that we're trying to deal with, so. And we have limited staff, and, um, and we, and there it is, so I, I can certainly move forward with it.
Thank you. We all, one of the projects we've been working on for many years is the regional bike route, bike plan project, and this would interface with that, the way I understand.
The, you heard the comment about the missing first or last mile. We get it.
Yeah, unless, I, I'm certainly in favor of taking a risk. I don't think it's a significant risk anyway to, to write a letter for a grant. How's the council feel? Dr. Brand?
Mayor, I think we should find a way to get to yes here. Two years is a long time before opportunities to, uh, get money. Uh, this is a beautifully sought-through project. I mentioned a couple meetings ago that our borders are ugly on every side of El Segundo. We don't have a good border. This would make a good border from Imperial Highway to El Segundo Boulevard. Two, two years, things change. Funding changes. Maybe Jessica Doherty, who pulled this whole thing together on everybody's behalf, isn't available then. Maybe she's got other client work. She's done this all pro bono. Let's give the support.
Dr. Brand, let's hear it from Mr. Mitnick, yeah?
Counsel, um, and I'm, I'm at fault for letting this go a little far. Here's what I would suggest, based on what I, the sentiment I think is. Um, and sorry for the inconvenience on your schedule, but perhaps we should have a, a brief, uh, sort of emergent, uh, urgent, emergency-type meeting, or a special meeting in the next two days to get your official authorization, uh, to make it clean and, 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 'cause we, we, we do have to have some notice for the community, uh, and then we can submit the letter on Friday, would, if you're agreeable to that.
So we could meet as early as, what, what's twenty-four or forty-eight hour notice?
We could do it Thursday, it could be in the morning, or whatever works around your schedule, and that way the city attorney will not have a conniption.
Yeah, huh, fat chance. We've got special meetings through the end of the year.
Um, that's, that, I mean, that would make it really clean. The other, the other way is I, I submit the application, I come back and get it to be retroactive, and then, um, that probably would not be clean, um, from his perspective.
Does that stand up, though? I mean, I'd rather do that than have a special meeting, frankly.
Uh, now, I'm, I didn't go to law school, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mark.
Council doesn't have any ability to take action this evening, um, so city manager can move forward and do that, or you can call a special meeting if you want to take action.
Can- If I did do that, I would come back to get it retroactive.
But we are legally allowed to make comment based upon public comment, are we not?
Yes, um, you're allowed to briefly respond, but you're not allowed to take any action.
So as long as there's not a motion, a second, and a vote, then really there's no action. Am I wrong?
I would recommend just let the city manager move forward with this, and then bring it back for a retroactive-
Yeah, let's do that.
Well, I mean, can-
I did have one, I did have one question, though. For, so, the grant money is to build the park, the, the, the walkway. Who would maintain it over time, and where would that money come from?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that has to be determined, but since it would be in our city limit, um, normally for public right-of-ways, it's the municipality, but there are sometimes other arrangements. The county of, um, LA could play a role. Um, we could, the property owner could play a role, whether it's Metro or the, uh, the train, um, I'm sorry, the railroad, uh, or even because of the adjacent property owners. It could be a development agreement that the adjacent property owners are responsible. So, these are some of the details we would normally work out. So, it could be any of the above.
Would we be obligated to spend any money if we submitted this application besides our time?
Not at this point. It would be just the indirect costs of staff time, and these, the residents here have done a lot of the legwork, and if it's as simple as they say, and they just hand it over and all the verbiage is pretty much correct, then we would just sign it, put it in there. So my gut tells me no harm, no foul doing this, but just recognize there, when you rush things in life, and if it's not thoroughly vetted, there's always the possibility of unintended consequences, but this is a pretty straightforward thing at this stage.
Yeah, I'll just say, I don't think it's been rushed. Sounds like it's been in process for years. It's just recently picked up momentum. So I think unless I hear any other opposition, the city manager is going to draft a letter, then come back to us retroactively, but I see Councilman Pimontzal for that.
I mean, considering that we have done none of the preparation, none of the legwork, and I know we're not deliberating anything, but I think that if we're empowering the city manager to take action on his own on this, we would probably be empowering him to make a judgment as a municipal professional, that if there's something in there that seems injurious or onerous or encumbers the city, that he has the power to pass on this as well.
Yeah.
We're gonna stack a paper that we didn't prepare and say, sign.
That's how grants work, correct? We've turned down grants before.
Isn't this a grant for feasibility analysis, essentially?
Right, and, you know, um, why don't we just, uh, let me just say this, 'cause it's not agendized. Let us just move forward. I, I think we all know where, where we're moving, and I will tell you this, that over the next couple of days, if there's something in this that is concerning, it will be so identified, and I will share that with the council.
Is everyone good? Yeah.
So, you're not gonna take a consensus or a vote right now, correct?
No.
It's not on the agenda.
No, it's not on the agenda. We can't do that, Mona. Uh, I just want to thank the Del Air community for coming together. Uh, I grew up in that neighborhood. I know exactly what it is. Uh, although I was a Hawthorne resident, I definitely identified my life in El Segundo, and I'm sure many of you go to restaurants in El Segundo, shop at the Ralphs in El Segundo. I see some of you on the pool deck at the Wiseburn El Segundo thing, Boy Scouts in El Segundo, so on and so forth. So, uh, I just want to say thank you for your efforts. Uh, your voice was definitely heard this evening, and as much as we cannot take action because it's not agendized, uh, you've definitely been heard, and, uh, I'm pretty sure the city manager can infer as to where the, uh, council sits on this issue, but thank you.
Okay, uh, Scott Mitnick, would you like to make any follow-on comments?
Understood. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item A, consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. Thank you. By the way, great drawings. Your wife did a great job. Yeah. Do we have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only?
Summon.
We have a second?
Oh, sorry, Don.
No, go. You seconded, right?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Okay. Consent calendar, any polls?
Uh, number nine.
Chris, any polls? Scott?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, five-zero. Carol, item nine.
Um, resolution to support city's application for SB two grant from State of California Department Housing and Community Development. I just wanted to understand, uh, you know, there's, I was reading over the, um, the information, and I was kind of intrigued about the single room. Uh, and I just want to kind of understand what this was, and just give us a little bit of background. I want to make sure that we're not opening, you know, you, when, we've talked before, sometimes when you apply for a grant, you kind of open up a bit of a Pandora's box, and I just want to make sure that, I just really wanted to understand this one specifically.
Yeah, that's a, that, it's a, it's a, a real good concern. Um, the first, the background on this, this was, uh, required of all the cities in California in the last round for the housing element, and our housing element states that before the next one is adopted, we will also do this. So a single-room occupancy is a type of, um, of a affordable housing, where usually the bathrooms are not included in the units. They're down the hall, shared, and sometimes kitchens as well. And the state sees that as just another way of, of, um, providing affordable housing, and so they've asked all the cities to adopt this ordinance.
And then the grant that we're applying to for, is it, is it, 'cause it's just the ordinance, or is it?
Well, there's-
I thought there was a grant component to it.
There's five components to this grant. Um, the first three are ordinances that all are in the same position as the SRO ordinance, which is that they were mandated through the housing element process in the last round. We're obligated to do them before 2021, and it, this would just, um, essentially get the state to pay for it instead of, instead of us doing it, which we would have to do anyway. The, um, the other nice component that goes with those is that we're asking for a considerable amount of money to go to public outreach, so that we can get in front of the community and explain why we're doing this, what we're doing, and what SROs are, and et cetera. So that's a, that's a nice bonus. We wouldn't have that otherwise. And then the last part is, um, to do a study of the zoning standards and the zones, the properties in the city, to see where we're going to squeeze the massive RENA allotment that we've gotten for the next round. It's going, we, we have sixty-nine in this round. It's going to five-hundred-and-twenty-three in the next round. So, we've got to figure out where to put those. So, this grant will help us to analyze our codes, analyze the, the fabric of the city, and figure out where we can possibly- and figure out where we can possibly squeeze those in. Uh, we're making no commitments to go on the other side of the PCH. We're not suggesting it. We're not even gonna study it. Just, I think it's gonna come up, so I'll just preemptively say that.
So, just real quick, so the, the ordinance, does that allow for us to zone S, us?
Yeah, the SRO one will do two things. It will, um, it will identify possible locations. There were several SROs that were building the city back in the early, early days, and most of them have become like hotels or something.
There's still some in operation though.
Yeah, there are some. And in this, the, the, that won't hurt them. They'll stay in operation. But some of them have converted to hotels.
Will those be able to count towards those RENA numbers?
No, they're not new housing.
Oh, okay.
But this will give them, you know, standards like us to work up to or something. But they're, they're, they're not conforming now. This will make them conforming. That's a good thing. But we do have a few that converted to other uses, and now that, there's actually interest in converting them back to SROs. So this will make that possible.
So that this conversation is not taken out of context, um, can a six bedroom house in the middle of an R one zone be turned into an SRO?
We don't intend to make SROs part of the R one zone, or even the R two zone for that matter.
Thank you.
So, onto that question. Would that be a council decision to make that?
Of course.
Okay. Cause I, I think that, it, you know, especially with the, I think the residents are starting to see with, with all of the, um, stuff coming down from the state of California, there's fear, and, you know, that our town will change dramatically, and I just wanna.
Understood. That's why we have programmed, um, a good chunk of this money for the public outreach.
Okay. And would, in that outreach, would there be, um, dialogue for them to come back to give in, their input?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. It's not, it's not to teach them. It's to communicate with them. Yeah.
Okay. I'm okay moving forward then.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes, I'll move forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Dr. Brand, were you aye? Yeah. Five zero, okay. Man, I'm saying, we're on record here.
Turning over a new leaf.
All right, uh, staff presentations. Item ten, adopt the resolution approving the engineering and traffic survey and introduction of an ordinance to amend section eight four, eight four three of the El Segundo Municipal Code to set citywide speed limits pursuant to the survey. And I see Mr. Berkman coming up to present.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. The, um, California Vehicle Code requires each local jurisdiction to conduct an engineering and traffic survey of its roadways every five years, with a possible extension to seven years if enforcement officers are radar certified. This allows agencies to set prima facie speed limits, reasonable and prudent speed limits under optimum conditions, and enable our police department to utilize radar for enforcement. Our, our, um, officers are certified, so we can do our surveys evens, every seven years in our city. Public Works tasked one of our on-call traffic engineering firms, Richard Garland and Associates, to conduct the survey in accordance with the California Vehicle Code, Caltrans, and state laws. Garland also did the survey, uh, for us seven years ago. The survey has the purpose of validating the existing speed limits and identifying, um, posted speed limits that should be adjusted or to, uh, remain the same. The field work was completed in September, and the results indicate that the thirty-nine speed, um, street segments with posted speed limits throughout the city are posted at appropriately established speed limits. The study also recommends new postings of speed limits that, um, were in locations where none currently exist, as noted in the report. For the benefit of the council and the public, uh, we'd like to provide a brief summary of how speed limits are, uh, set. So the speed limits are based upon what's called the, the critical speed or the eighty-five, uh, eighty-fifth percentile speed. Um, this is the speed at or below which eighty-five percent of the traffic is moving on a segment of a roadway. Council has heard me state before that there is an element of, um, psychology and human behavior when it comes to the field of traffic engineering, and this is definitely at play with regard to our speed limits. As drivers ourselves, we personally establish speed limits via our driving habits. The eighty-fifth percentile speed identifies what a majority of drivers believe is safe and reasonable for a particular roadway segment. Using this data, speed, uh, speed limits are set to the nearest whole five mile an hour increment, um, to the eighty-fifth percentile speed, or supported by, uh, the findings of the report, and the data in the field could be lowered to the next lower, um, five mile an hour increment. So the purpose of controlling speed limits by signage and enforcement is to restrict the top fifteenth percentile drivers who exceed the reasonable and prudent speed. Reasonable speed limits provide officers with the means to regulate these drivers who do not conform to what the majority of drivers, uh, find reasonable and prudent. Before I get to the conclusions, uh, there's one interesting, uh, facet of the report that, uh, is part of the survey, and that is our, um, rate of collisions in our city. Um, we couldn't come up with, uh, data from the county, um, but the California statewide on state highways, um, the million, uh, there, there are about one collision per million vehicle miles traveled. The numbers are a little confusing, but relatively speaking, I'll get to that. Caltrans District Seven is one point two eight collisions per million vi, vehicle miles. Nationally, it's two point, a little over two collisions per million vehicle, um, miles traveled. El Segundo, we're at a point eight seven collisions per million vehicle miles traveled, so we're, um, well below some of the averages across our state and our country. So to conclude, the Public Works and Police Departments have jointly reviewed and concur with the recommendations provided in the survey. Accordingly, staff recommends the council adopt the resolution to adopt the survey and authorize the city manager to take the actions necessary to effectuate the survey, waive the first reading, and introduce an ordinance to amend the code to set the speed limits citywide, um, pursuant to the survey, and schedule the second reading of the ordinance at the city council's next regularly scheduled meeting. So the city attorney, myself, and Richard Garland are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Berkman or the consultant?
Any major changes?
Uh, none. None. Just posting of six, uh, speed limits for six streets that do not have signs posted.
Perfect. Thank you.
No other discussion or comments?
No.
Okay. We're gonna take a vote, and then you're going to read it, the resolution?
There's a resolution and an ordinance. So the resolution is, uh, for adoption this evening. The ordinance will be for introduction. I'll read the resolution first. The resolution adopting the September two thousand nineteen City of El Segundo Engineering and Traffic Survey for Speed Zoning and authorizing the city manager to take any actions necessary to effectuate the survey is ready for adoption.
Okay, will you take a vote on this, Mark?
Yes.
Yes, all right. I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you.
Next is an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code, section eight dash four dash three to declare a prima facia or maximum speed limit greater than twenty-five miles per hour on certain streets is ready for introduction.
All right, I'll move approval and introduction.
Just introduced.
Okay, thank you. All right, item eleven, introduce an ordinance amending the El Segundo Municipal Code to require food and beverage providers implement, providers implement an upon request policy for single use plastics, straws, stirs, and utensils. And do we have a presentation on this? Yes, Mr. Berkman again. Thank you.
Thank you, um, Mayor, council members. At the December third meeting, council directed staff to draft an ordinance to make all single use plastics available to customers only upon request. Having the ordinance in place will give the city more local control over this issue, considering that similar bills, um, with the state did not pass into law, um, as of the legislative session that ended, uh, back in September. The purpose of this ordinance, which was based upon similar ordinances in Manhattan Beach and Hermosa Beach, is to require certain businesses in our city to follow an upon request policy for single use plastics, um, to reduce adverse environmental and public health impacts associated with single use plastics, and to promote environmentally sustainable. If this off, uh, if this ordinance passes, no food or beverage provider, uh, shall provide single use plastic straws, utensils, or stirs, except upon the request of the customer. Uh, with regard to, um, legal challenges, Manhattan Beach's ordinance prohibiting plastic carryout bags was challenged by the Save the Plastic Bag Coalition, who argued that Manhattan Beach did not, uh, adequately evaluate the environmental impacts of the ordinance. The California Supreme Court upheld the ordinance, uh, however, finding that Manhattan Beach's environmental analysis was adequate. Other agencies' ordinance were challenged and, challenged and successfully defended in other state jurisdictions, as the court found that the ordinances were actions intended to protect natural refor, resources, and therefore exempt them from further review under SEQA. The ordinance is not subject to review under SEQA because it could be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the ordinance, uh, may have a significant effect on the environment, along with several other reasons as noted in the staff report. If introduced tonight, the ordinance would be scheduled for a second reading and adoption at the next regularly scheduled meeting. And staff respectfully recommends the ordinance become enforceable three months after its effective date to provide proper notification to the food and beverage providers, and allow them enough time to modify their operations, and importantly, inform their customers of the upcoming change. City attorney and I are here for any questions.
Any questions, council? I have, what, Chris, you wanna go first?
Uh, just under exemptions, if it's a drive-through serving hot coffee, are they allowed to put the plunger in? Do they have to apply for an exemption for that, or is it, is that, because they obviously have a liability going forward for the hot beverage?
City attorney?
Currently, as, as worded, there's not exemption for, um, drive-through windows. I, I note that, our drive-throughs, um, I know we've got a request on that item from, uh, restaurant industry.
It tends to pop up. I think every city that looks at this has that same request, so I didn't know if we'd put that in there.
It is not in here, but we could add that.
And one of the ways I've seen other, um, beverage establishments work around this is to provide paper straws.
No, I think he's talking about the little thing that prevents the coffee from spilling out.
You know, they put that little, that little plastic plug in there. Yeah, paper straw with hot coffee would be a maddening experience too, but, um, I just think that, you know, that might be something that, so we're not, we're not at, asking them to absorb a, a tort claim.
Understood. Um, and as, I think I know what you're talking about. I don't drink a lot of coffee. Is it a stirr, or is it just like a plug?
No, it's a plug.
Uh, well, this doesn't prohibit a plug, so, okay.
But it's plastic.
Yeah, but, but we call out certain types.
We have to define it, as long as they don't define it as a stirrer, they define it as a plug.
Well, we, we call out plastic ware and stirs, and so this is not something that we call out as being a single use prohibited plastic, so that would be permissible.
I agree with that. In our communication, that may be one, once, as, as we do the, the outreach, this would be something that we wanna make sure that, that they know that we're not asking them to, uh, to hazard themselves a lawsuit.
Thanks, Chris. Mayor Protem, did you have something? No. I, quick question, Ken?
Yes.
Uh, other cities outlawed poly styrene. We heard the Environmental Committee, at least one rep, talk about that. Did we consider that, and if so, why do we choose not to include that?
Uh, we only followed council direction from last meeting, which was this specific item.
Yeah, it was kind of a knee jerk reaction even then, a little bit. Um, okay.
But this is a first start.
It's a, yeah, it's a step.
This isn't the end.
It's a step, yeah. I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's an ordinance.
Oh, yes.
I'll read the title, and then it just needs.
Well, wait a second. Are we, are we clear though that we're making the, the exemption, or no? It's just plastic in there? We don't need to address Chris's concern?
No, that, that's, it's actually just a procedural element that, that, as this goes forward, their communication, that those things are not a utensil, uh, that they are part of the mechanics of the vessel.
They weren't intended to be, and they're not prohibited by this ordinance, and we'll make that clear.
Okay, so that'll be the outreach, okay.
So this is an ordinance amending El Segundo Municipal Code Title Five to require an up, upon request policy for plastic straws, stirs, and utensils, and that is ready for introduction.
So moved.
I wanna introduce. Carol's introducing.
Introduce, and so this will be brought back at the council's next regular council meeting, which is January twenty-first.
Great. Thank you. Progress. It's a start. Okay, thank you. Item twelve, approve open the recruit, approve opening the recruitment process for the positions on the committees, commissions, and boards that expires in the year twenty twenty. I know we've got an extensive list there. So guys, someone gonna read the list, or are we just approving that? Okay, I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. City clerk reports.
Only that I wanted to just make sure the public knew this is the last week to have the opportunity to visit the, uh, new voting system from the county at the Recreation and Parks Clubhouse from, uh, eleven AM to eight PM, Wednesday through Friday, and eleven to five on Saturday. It's the new voting ballot marking machine. It'd be great if the public would like to go and just take a look at it, use it, experience it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. City treasurer, anyone here?
She was.
She was, no longer. Okay, council member Pimentel.
Uh, just as we go into the holiday, I think that it's worth noting how much time and effort we see from people, the community giving of their time immaterial to less fortunate people. I know between two elementary schools, they donated something like eight thousand items of clothing. I think that you see groups donating four and five thousand dollars at a swipe, uh, and I know, having gone to a food on foot, uh, handout over Thanksgiving, that there were, in the driving rain, five hundred people lined up, and these are not people who are destitute, just people who are having difficulty, uh, in the economy. So there's a need out there, and I think the people are also gonna do some wonderful things for it. Happy holidays.
Here, here. Thank you. Council member Nickel.
I just wanted to, uh, congratulate staff on a wonderful tree lighting experience. Uh, compared to last year in the rain, I wanna say we had ten times the amount of people. This year, it was, um, standing up on stage and looking out, it was, it was a bit of a wow moment of how many people were in Civic Plaza, so congratulations, uh, to you staff, and it was great to see so many of you here. Uh, you know, Scott, I think that's a testament to the work that you're doing with the E-Team. I also wanted to congratulate the twelve hundred block of, uh, East Acacia on their Candy Cane Lane opening on Saturday night, another very well attended evening. Um, special thanks goes to Mayor Protem Purstik for, uh, assisting Santa Claus on his walk down the street, uh, of.
You mean push.
I wasn't gonna say, he did have some, uh, pant malfunction that we, uh, dealt with on the fly, but, um, uh, being a former resident of that neighborhood, uh, kinda to piggyback on what Chris said, El Segundo is a community that has the, um, the ability and the option to give. And, you know, not every community has that ability. You know, we are beyond blessed here, and we live quite the, um, you know, blessed life, and for us to step up and fundraise or make donations, or even just come together as a community to spread the Christmas cheer like they do on the twelve hundred block, it's, uh, it's because we have the ability to, and, and we're very lucky that we can. And so I just, uh, encourage all in the community to continue to spread the Christmas cheer, uh, hold your family close, and, uh, I wish all of my council members a wonderful New Years, this being the last council meeting of the century.
Yeah.
Or, sorry, the decade.
Decade.
Decade, yeah. Century, decade. That's all I got. Mayor?
Thank you, council member Nickel. Council member Brand?
Yeah, Merry Christmas and great holidays to everybody. You guys get it like a month off, uh, before your next meeting, it sounds like, a little more than a month. I'm jealous, but, uh, I get longer than that off for good behavior. Um, like to thank everybody for the recognition earlier tonight. Um, think that you're gonna make great strides for the city going forward. Appreciate, uh, all your time and effort, and, um, been, uh, been very interesting to be here for, almost four years again, so, uh, good luck in twenty twenty. I think it's gonna be a, a great year, and, uh, Happy New Year to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. Mayor Protem Purstik.
Yeah, Don, thank you again for all your service. We will definitely miss you. Um, I did want to also thank Meredith and her team for the tree lighting. It was a very wonderful event. Um, and I do wanna thank not only the residents of the twelve hundred block of Acacia, but all the residents that live around there, because the parking is quite bummel at the moment, but I'm, it's just for a couple of weeks, and it, the, the smiles and joy you bring to the kids that you, that, when you see the kids see Santa and see all the lights is worth all, everywhere, every minute of it. I can tell you that I felt like an offensive linebacker at the walking Santa down the, down the street, but, um, I'm sure we can, we have some ideas for next year to improve that going forward. Um, I also had the joy of riding on Santa's sleigh this, um, on Monday, which was amazing. We saw, thank you to the Quanis and the El Segundo PD. Um, we saw, we, two hundred and fifty kids came to see Santa that night. It was a fun night seeing all the faces, the kids light up and just in their. It was a fun night seeing all the faces, the kids light up and just in their pajamas and their robes and matching, matching, like family matching pajamas. It was, it was quite, quite special and, um, it really brings a lot of joy and just reminds us of the, the magic of the, of the season and, um, you know, just to be kind and be generous and just respect everybody, it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful time of year. So, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa and hope everyone has a wonderful New Year.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, um, I want to commend the chamber, is Marcia still here? Marcia, Linda, everybody did an incredible job at the parade. I think it was the best turnout you've had, right? Long time, great job, even with the rain, what a turnout, thank you. And I have something to read, this is an agenda item and it'll be pretty quick here. This is, yeah.
Do you have the authority and power to do this?
We shall see. Let me read it and then we'll go from there, right? All right, this is consideration and possible action regarding the annual request of Mr. S. Claus for variances from the municipal code. Recommended council action is to approve the request by Mr. S. Claus for a waiver of the permits required for doing business within the city of El Segundo as follows. The use of air rights and waiver of the Santa Monica Radio one sixty R procedure, grant a free business license for a nonprofit organization, waiver of the noise ordinance to permit the sound of bells, waiver of the trespass ordinance, including dealing with trespassing animals, waiver of the ordinance on animal regulations, fiscal impact none. City Manager, is anyone going to present on this? No, I don't think so, okay.
Is this a public hearing?
Yeah, and, um, I just lost it, hold on. Modern technology. And just, just for background, where Mr. S. Claus required to take the time to obtain all of the necessary permits, there would be many unhappy boys and girls in El Segundo. In order to expedite the timely delivery of presents, council should waive the fees and permits required. Council discussion? So moved? That's quick, any other council discussion?
I'll second.
I really want to hear Don vote no on this. I love you backed him into it, backed him into it.
That's why I came out fast, I remember my vote on the ice cream truck and, uh, not going to repeat that.
All right, we have a, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And on a serious note, we lost a great leader of the community, so we're going to adjourn in honor of former Mayor Gordon Stevens. Longtime El Segundo resident and former Mayor Gordon Stevens passed away December sixth, twenty nineteen. Gordon served two terms in the city council from April sixteenth nineteen sixty-eight to April twenty-first nineteen seventy as council member. April twenty-first nineteen seventy to April eighteenth nineteen seventy-two as mayor and April eighteenth nineteen seventy-two to March ninth nineteen seventy-six as council member. The graveside service for Gordon Stevens Senior will be held Saturday, December twenty-first twenty nineteen at eleven AM. Family, friends and members of the church and community who have been touched by Gordon's life are invited to celebrate his life with his family. So, again, that's Saturday, December twenty-first, eleven AM, Inglewood Park Cemetery, which is at seven twenty East Florence Avenue in Inglewood. And finally, there's an information booth that will be available at the inside gate, it'll provide map and directions. Be adjourned at, does it say seven fifty? Seven fifty, thank you.